Good morning. Today is October 15th, and this is our Lake County Board of Commissioners workshop. The Fishers have this workshop so they will bring other things in front of us that aren't necessarily on our business agenda, so we are going to open up the workshop at 10:33. Do I have anybody who would like to speak? Bishop Mary Bell, I'll have you go first.
Hi. Commissioners, I'd like to say thank you. That's what makes this county great. You give recognition whenever the Lord bless you. If all the trees on earth were paint and the entire ocean were ink, it would take me eternity to give God all the glory, all the honor, and all the praises to be in the United States for 42 years. There is no other place I would like to live, and I'm so thankful for the great diversity of this great country. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Dave Lima, Mentor, Ohio, Litchfield Drive. We are concerned that racial profiling and civil rights violations will occur under the auspices of the 287G agreement despite the best efforts to avoid it. The recent Supreme Court ruling declaring ethnicity alone to be reasonable suspicion, permitting stops, questioning, and possible detainment just on the basis of skin color, language, accent, hair, and facial features will likely increase incidence of racial profiling and civil rights violations. The sheriff's assurances that this will not happen is comforting, but his proposed safeguard, review of body cam footage, will not alone be sufficient to guard against racial profiling and potential civil rights violations. In-house review teams comprised of fellow officers begin review often with a bias in favor of the officer in question. We propose that in order to reduce the possibility of bias, the review team should include one or more non-law enforcement members. The 287G agreement provision for expanded immigration enforcement has led to increased levels of anxiety and fear within the Hispanic community. Additionally, an erosion of trust will serve not only to reduce cooperation with the sheriff's department, but with other law enforcement agencies as well. Community safety will be compromised. The 287G agreement designation of trained officers as bona fide ICE agents may not reduce liability even for the potential civil rights violations. Liability may still exist under the Federal Tort Claims Act. The requirement that officers in real time investigate and interpret complex federal immigration and civil rights laws can and do lead to errors in judgment and action. This places the department and the county at risk of significant monetary judgments. The sheriff currently accepts ICE administration warrants. Acceptance of judicial warrants rather than ICE administrative warrants would provide further protection against liability. We strongly recommend this change. Obviously, any monetary judgment should occur will be borne by the Lake County taxpayer. An additional concern is the impact that this agreement will have on traditional law enforcement activities. This should be monitored and determined if any harmful effects on the provision of traditional law enforcement activities occur. And finally, we believe termination of the 287G agreement is warranted for those reasons described above, as well as the negative impact it will have on community safety. Should the sheriff choose not to terminate the agreement, frequent periodic review of the 287G agreement should occur. If the agreement is shown to harm the community or lead to civil rights violations, it should be terminated. Again, we recommend one or more non-law enforcement community members be included in the periodic review. Dave Lima, Pat Denny, and Dan Phillips. May I provide you with a copy of this?
Of course. Thank you. Thank you. Any gentleman wish to respond, or Sheriff, would you like to respond?
Sure. Is he asking for more people?
Everyone will have a chance to speak.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Lima's comments regarding a 287 agreement, and he has the right to do that. I find it extremely offensive, and I will speak on behalf of the deputies that work at the Lake County Sheriff's Office to say that racial profiling will occur, that abuse of civil rights will occur through the Lake County Sheriff's Office. I've been with the Lake County Sheriff's Office for 36 years, going on 37 years. In 37 years, we have had no case against us declaring that we racial profile, that we have abused the civil rights of any of our citizens. Our patrol areas and our townships have had a significant Hispanic population throughout my 36 years. We have worked well with our Hispanic community, as we have with all of our citizens. To say that fear is going to run rampant because the Lake County Sheriff's Office will abuse people's rights is an injustice, I think, to be spoken against our deputies and creates -- and creates a dangerous atmosphere for them to work in by declaring that they are going to abuse people's rights, they are going to mishandle people, they are going to take people out of the community unjustly. Place -- those accusations place the deputy sheriffs in a dangerous situation in which they have to work, and I would be remiss not to speak out and declare that adjustments of these statements is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sir, in the red.
I'm Brian Rice, 46, Tanner's Farm Drive in Painesville Township. Lived here for almost over 20 years now, and I was part of the group that met with the sheriff, and I'm inclined to give him and his deputies the benefit of the doubt when it comes to civil rights enforcement and discrimination. But anyone that's at all interested in this topic has certainly seen what has been going on in ICE with ICE in other communities, mainly in the big cities, and their hiring effort is just beginning. It's now in Chicago, Los Angeles, we've all read the horror stories, people being thrown to the street, civilians, I mean citizens, people that haven't even done anything wrong, incarcerated for hours, days at a time, and then released with no explanation. It's just a matter of time before that comes here. I mean, the budget that ICE has is humongous, and they've only used a small portion of that. So what makes you think, and the sheriff, what makes you think that won't happen here? So it's just beyond me why any community would want to sign an agreement with that type of behavior. It's just, if nothing else, even if we do everything right at the county level, we have to be vigilant about as far as what's going to happen with ICE. And if that starts happening to people in our community, what's going on in Chicago and Los Angeles? I don't know what to say. It's incomprehensible, so please don't let that happen. Thank you.
Ma'am.
My name's Constance Scruggel. I live at 7702 Twilight Drive, Mentor, on the Lake, Ohio. And I wasn't really planning on speaking, but the sheriff's comments got my ire up, and I will tell you why. The first thing out of his mouth was that he thought this gentleman's comments were Think about that. That's a conflict right there. This gentleman never accused the sheriff or any of the deputies of doing racial profiling. He pointed out the potential, but the sheriff is offended by the potential. The sheriff doesn't want to look at the reality. Are we all human beings here? Do we know human nature? What potentially can happen will happen, and we have seen this happening in other communities. I've heard the question asked, why is this -- why is this program being adopted here in Lake County? Well, I'll tell you why. Because approximately 30% of the citizens of Painesville, our county seat, are Hispanic. That's why. And I want to point out that the task force model of the 287G program authorizes broad enforcement, encouraging racial profiling, because a deputy sheriff can arrest someone simply because they believe that person to be undocumented. No proof is necessary. If that officer believes that person is undocumented because of the color of their skin or the accent that they carry, this is not America. The name of this country is the United States of America. This is not displaying unity. This is division, and the potential for what will happen will happen. Over 70% of those detained on a nationwide level have had no criminal indictments, over 70%. And somehow, Lake County is going to be immune to this happening? Somehow, this is the pristine place, it's not going to happen here? Well, I'm sorry to inform you, but the potential for what may happen will happen, and if that makes you proud of being leaders of this community, then you need to search your soul.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, then we will continue on. Taking offense to something is something that happens to all human beings. I'm sure that most of the people here are offended. Elected officials are no different. We, at the first and foremost, we're humans, and so the things that are said can be offensive to us. I agree that the gentleman's comments at the beginning, he did not accuse the sheriff of racial profiling or any civil violations, but the assumption that something has potential, making that assumption and that jump to saying that it will happen, is where the offense can be taken from the sheriff and his deputies. And I might say I'm offended at the assumption that because something has the potential, we automatically assume that it will happen, and it very well may. But to assume that I or any of the other commissioners are going to sit idly by while injustice, civil rights violations, racial profiling, or any of these other things are going to happen is the purpose of us having this discussion. I do not dispute that what we see on the news or what we see in other communities can be troubling, all right? And I understand the difficulties of understanding the ICE 287G agreements and how it pertains to our community and others. I remind folks, we are county commissioners, right, wrong, indifferent. The state government is a larger entity than us, and the federal government is a larger entity than that. You referenced a Supreme Court decision that changed and allowed basically racial profiling as a reason to have somebody pulled over. That is a federal issue, and as Commissioner Plasnik and I have discussed in the past, and Commissioner -- or Auditor Galloway and I have discussed in the past, we have the opportunity to voice our opinions and make change on federal elections every two years, the first Tuesday of November, and we have the same opportunity with our state folks, just as you do with local officials. And so we have a difficult dynamic that Lake County does not overrule the federal government. It simply cannot happen. And the issues with the law enforcement officers not having any proof of anything, the burden of proof, as I interpret it, to be -- goes to the court system. I don't know that law enforcement officers ever have any proof of anything they're ever arresting anybody for. Their job is to detain people that they think are doing something wrong in the community, and then it's gentlemen like our Assistant Prosecutor's Office here, Mr. Hackman, and the Chief Prosecutor, and other law enforcement courts to decide that information. And as I understand the 287G agreements that we've entered into, and we not -- we have not entered into all of them, but the ones that we have entered into simply give the sheriff's office the legal authority that they did not have, that if somebody is here illegally, to be able to detain them for 24 or 48 hours if ICE, a federal agency, has an interest in handling that case. And I don't want a fear in the community to think that some of the things you see on TV in other communities is happening here, and I have had conversations with the sheriff a number of times, and we've talked about these topics. And my basic understanding of it is this, if somebody is doing something illegal and gets stopped by an officer or is already in our jails for something that they've done, that they're being held for a crime, that they're getting prosecuted on, that that is when this 287G is going to apply to those individuals. And I think that maybe we need to do a better job, back to your earlier point about the Hispanic community not wanting to engage in the sheriff's department, I think we need to do a better job of educating and getting out in front of the Hispanic community and saying, listen, if you're not breaking laws, then there isn't going to be a problem with the sheriff's department. If you see laws being broken elsewhere, if you see something happening, please, by all means, engage the sheriff's department, because a crime is being committed, that's when we need to engage them, so that we're not creating a fear to engage the department. And I will be the first to say, I support the sheriff, and the moment that there's a case of racial profiling or a civil liberty or civil law being violated, then the sheriff and I are going to have to have an unfortunate, uncomfortable conversation. Now, that's all I can do as a leader of this community, as people think I might be as a commissioner, is to be open and have a transparent conversation, but I don't want to jump to conclusions of saying because something has the potential, that therefore it will automatically happen, and I think that's where some folks start to take offense or start to have their feelings hurt in this conversation. Do I think that Lake County is this pristine, beautiful place that's going to remain? God, I hope, right? That's why I ran for office, that's what I'm trying to do. So I understand, I do, I understand where the conversation is coming from. I just want to reassure you guys and the folks that have these concerns that this is how I understand the sheriff's department to be handling its business, and I support what they're doing. And what we see on the TV in Chicago or LA or these other cities is not what we see going on here in Lake County. And if we start to cross into that path, then we will have more difficult, uncomfortable conversations, but I hope, and will still continue to operate, that we do not see that happen, and that we are a special place here in the county. So, did you want to speak?
I have two quick comments. First of all, thank you very much.
Can you please come to the mic?
Thank you for your comments. So two quick comments. One is that I'm not assuming that you would stand by and not do anything about it, and if my words were taken that way, I apologize. I am encouraging you to be aware of the potential. It sounds like that you are, and I hope that you all are, because the problem is when the guardrails start to fall down, when someone acts in an illegal way compared to the Constitution that I grew up knowing, and it's just passed over as, you know, a bad apple or misbehavior and excused. I want you to be fully aware of the potential. That's what my words are to say, and I am still disturbed by the sheriff's comments. Yeah, he could be offended, but if he's that offended that that's the first thing that wants to come out of his mouth, then, I don't know, maybe he's too thin-skinned. He has an important position in this county, and he needs to be aware of the feelings of all of the citizens of this county and all of the residents of this county. And I certainly commend you to encourage that there's more communication with the Hispanic community. Obviously, I'm not Hispanic. I'm a privileged white person. I commend you to encourage that communication with the Hispanic community, but you need to understand how fearful people in the Hispanic community are because of what is going on in this country. And if somehow Lake County is going to avoid that situation, well, that would be a miracle, and I would love that, to see that happen. More than anything, I would love to see this whole horror show come to an end. Thank you very much.
Sir, and back, now come back to you, Mr. Lima.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Father Rob Reedy. I'm a retired Catholic priest. I worked for many years in El Salvador. I was also chaplain for the Lorraine Police Department for six years and one year with the Brook Park Police. Just to make a couple observations, informing the Cleveland Police Academy, they came to an Hispanic church, and we were talking about what would happen if there's a car stoppage, and you checked the license of a driver, and he said, "I don't have a license," and then you get into the whole thing about being undocumented. We asked them, what would you do with the other four people in the car? That's a real important question. Lorraine adapted a policy, and it was written, that said that they would not question or check the documentation of the other people in the car. The Cleveland Safety Director said that is our unwritten policy, and he would never put it into words. I think some of the things you might need to do with the sheriff's department and the police department is talk about these certain situations, because this is where the rubber meets the road, you know, where it's going to affect people, not only those people who are disobeying the law, but those who are obeying the law but may not be here with a certain situation. My ask of this group here is maybe to consult a little bit more with the community, and you have to, it's a tough thing to do, because people won't come out to meetings. We try and get people to come out who are undocumented, and they're scared, to see if there's a way that you can get their idea of how they feel at this particular time. Also, to, as this group, to talk to other sheriff's departments, I think there's five that have signed this particular agreement, and maybe find out why have not the other, how many other people, why haven't they signed it? And I'm not from the county, I'm actually from Cleveland, but I've worked in many counties, but I just wanted to make those observations and just pray that people will be safe who are documented and undocumented and can make the right decisions.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to start by speaking directly to the sheriff deputies who are watching this meeting, because I know that many of them do, and say that even though there'll always be doubt in the community, Lake County supports you, your commissioners support you, and we recognize that the dangerous job you do keeps all of us safe. One of the comments made today is, what do we do when the guardrails come off? And we've started to see that in some communities, we really have. Post-COVID, after all the defund the police protests and the vitriol that was spewed at so many police officers, we've seen a dramatic decline in people who are willing to go to the police academy. We have, it's just a fact. Cleveland has given up even trying to hire their quota of police officers, they just have reduced the number now, so they're just accepting that permanently they'll have less officers on patrol. And I hate to say it, but there is a reason why so many people have moved from Cleveland to Lake County over the years, and it's not because Cleveland has good policing, it's quite the opposite. It's because that city was not well-managed by many public servants over many decades, but we're seeing the problems accelerate in communities that didn't value police officers. You know, when you're born and raised, you can decide to be a police officer, a doctor, a basketball player, a county administrator, there's a million different roles that you can pursue in the United States. It's an amazing thing that we're free to choose what we want to do, we're not stuck in a caste system, we're not forced to take a certain job, but there is a consequence to that. And the consequence is, if we all vilify and attack a certain position and say, well, you know, if it's conceivably possible that someone might do something wrong in that role that makes all of them villains, well, guess what? No one wants that job anymore. We all want to be heroes, so if nurses are heroes, we're going to be nurses, and if police officers are villains, no one's going to sign up for that job. Now, there's some jobs we can do without. If everyone quit the Cleveland Browns tomorrow, our win-loss record would be pretty similar. We could live without some jobs in society, but I don't think that we can live without police officers, because unfortunately, human nature is that some people do make very poor choices, and some people do harm others, and so there has to be a line of defense between law-abiding citizens and those who break the law. And it is a very dangerous job to be that thin blue line between all of us and a handful of bad people or disturbed people who cause harm. It's a very difficult, very dangerous job, and not a lot of people want to do it. And if we don't start appreciating the people who are willing to step up and take that risk, well, guess what? No one will do it. It's not, it's not a job that anyone has to do. People can move into a different career, a different profession, or what we're seeing is young people simply aren't going to police academy. You know, no one wants to live in a bad neighborhood, but what's the difference between a bad and a good neighborhood? Main difference is that there's a brave police officer there protecting people, and that doesn't mean that there aren't bad cops. You know, I personally, as a Catholic, hate it, how people attack all Catholic priests because a few did something absolutely evil. And we still have that difficult discussion in our faith about the abuse in the Catholic Church, but it was very rare. But it was very rare. We didn't have every single priest, or a majority of priests, hurting people. Very few people did very evil things. And for that, priests were vilified. And by the way, we see a lot fewer people going into the holy orders and vocations, and that's tragic. We're seeing churches close, because we can't find someone ready to step up and lead that faith community. It's sad. I think we need to remember that all of us have the potential to do good and evil. Is it possible that a sheriff deputy could engage in racial profiling? Yes. It's also possible that a citizen member of a committee could engage in racial profiling, or could have a bias against the police. Everyone has implicit biases. I'll, I'll paraphrase Justice Sonia Sada-Mayer, because she was kind enough to quote me once. We all have implicit bias. It's very easy to point the finger at everyone else and say, "You could be biased, you could be biased, you could be biased." And then we forget, we all have implicit bias. We all do, every single one of us. So, there's not a magic formula to eliminate it, and there's not one person responsible for it. But I do agree that we need to have a stronger dialogue in our community, and that's exactly why, when the commissioners have been asked for support, when the commissioners have been asked to attend meetings from OLA, which is our largest Hispanic organization in Painesville, I've taken the time to go, to listen, to see what those concerns are. And when there was a legal way for the county to extend financial support, I have. Because what I see in OLA is exactly what I see in the community centers and the churches that help the Slovenian community in Cleveland become full-fledged US citizens with jobs and lives. It was a pipeline. You know, you had the church, you had the community center that you went to, you learned English on the fly. My father and his brothers, his teachers, thought that they were mentally disabled, because they couldn't speak English. And they were confused why his brothers and he were so good at math, but so bad at reading. Well, the answer was, the parents just sent to school, and said, "Learn English while you're at it." And miraculously, they did. But if it wasn't for their churches and their community, they could have never done it. So, we have to be supportive of those organizations, and we have to listen to those concerns. But that doesn't mean that we have a distrust for the people who are doing the most dangerous, and what often is the most disliked job, but also the most important one. There, there are neighborhoods that some of you would not be willing to live in, and the reason, very simply put, is there's not a police officer on that corner, there's not someone coming if you call 911. We are blessed to have that in Lake County, we have people who are willing to make that risk and sacrifice for us. And I, for one, want to remind those folks how grateful we are every day. I don't want to imply that they're nefariously planning to do something wrong, or that they may do something wrong. We all know, we're human beings, and human beings can and do make mistakes. But I think we need to acknowledge that it is incredibly rare that people who stand up and make that sacrifice, make those mistakes. The vast majority of police officers in this country are brave, good, hard-working people, the vast majority. And once again, we wouldn't be willing to live here if they weren't here. There are places you don't want to be, because they're not there. I want to make sure that Lake County is the most supportive of our police, the most supportive of our sheriff, so that when times are harder and harder to recruit, and young people aren't willing to serve, they know at a minimum, at least here, we will appreciate you. And I know that regardless of whether you're Chinese, Hispanic, African-American, or Slovenian like me, you want someone to call when you call 911. And it's my job to make sure that the sheriff has the support to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Lima.
Yes, I want to comment on the increased potential for racial profiling and civil rights violations. The guardrails, which applies to all of us, the guardrails have been lowered. The Supreme Court decision lowered those guardrails. It's now reasonable suspicion for an officer to stop, question, and possibly detain someone. That ethnicity now becomes the indicator of reasonable suspicion. And they've lowered the guardrails. Instead of probable cause, which is a much higher level of requirement for the officer to be involved with the detainment of anyone, that is now not the case. You don't have to have probable cause, you only have to have reasonable suspicion, and ethnicity is reasonable suspicion, according to the Supreme Court decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Elson, 2160 Evergreen North Perry, former nurse man, former president of the Nursery Growers of Lake County, Ohio. And the, what we're talking about here, the Hispanic population, Latino population, to a great extent, a byproduct of our industry, so I think it's, it's right that we maybe point the finger a little bit, and involve us in the discussion. I think the sheriff does a great job. I've always supported the sheriffs here. Professional, well-trained, well-led. I think this ICE intervention, to whatever extent, I don't like acronyms, but to whatever extent it's happening, is overreaching, and I don't, I don't care for that. Certainly, we need Immigration Customs Enforcement in this country, and we need police, and that's, that's not what we're talking about here. We, this whole debate a few years ago started, "We're going to get the criminals." Well, I didn't cover it, but okay, we're going, we're going to do that. Well, now, we're going into the communities and pulling out people with, with no criminal behavior, other than coming to the country illegally. And so, it's been a progression. Some years ago, we had a local murder here, it occurred in Chardon. An illegal, alien, illegal person left Pain, downtown Painesville, ended up in Chardon, and killed somebody. And it turns out that the person, Jerry Serrino was related to that person, our former, former commissioner, I've talked to him about it. And that person, the illegal, had actually worked at our nursery for, for one day, probably didn't provide documentation, so we let him go. Horrible, horrible situation. But it was handled without ICE. Our SWAT team went there, our courageous sheriff's people, SWAT, SWAT members went there, and they took care of it. So, I, I think that this ICE assistance could be a distraction for the, for the sheriffs. And in Perry Township, we don't have at least patrolling going on, thanks to a judicial decision some, some years ago. I've been on the police patrol committee there, I've worked towards a couple elections to try to get, I support that we fund our sheriffs to help get patrolling in Perry Township, but those levies have failed. And to think that we're going to be going in and pulling non-criminal people out of homes, instead of doing patrolling in, in a community, which I, which I love, love living in, disturbs me. We had a leaky immigration system for many years, out of the Reagan reforms in '06, '07, the I-9 process, let people come in, nurseries didn't want to hire illegals, we don't want illegals now. The system has changed. We advocated for change in our industry for many, many years. Now, most of the bigger nurseries, many of the small ones, go through the H2A Guest Worker Program. It's very complicated, and very expensive threshold rate, I think it was 18 bucks an hour this year, and you pay for housing and transportation as well. But they're doing that. So, this is a historic problem, these illegal people coming in for the work in the nursery industries. Additionally, we had the community, and they were, they wanted to bring in their family members. Personally, I think if somebody's been in this country for 10 years or longer, no criminal acts, other than coming here illegally and, and using fake ID, that's a pretty good vetting for a potential legal person in this country, whether you make them a citizen or not. And I think we, you know, we should, we should be distinguishing between those with criminal behavior, and this was how things started out, as, as opposed to just rounding up everyone, as we see in these, in these other cities. There's a good discussion for us to be having, Lake County's always been kind of in the forefront, going back to 1840s, 1850, where there was abolition we were talking about, and the Federal Runaway Slave Act. And I'm not saying we should be ignoring federal, federal laws, but we can lean one way or the other, and I would prefer to have our sheriffs working primarily on criminal, local criminal residents, rather than people who have just lived here fairly peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just real quick, I wanted to clarify again, that the sheriff's department 287G contracts deal with people who are either stopped by a deputy in the course of their, during their job, or are already in the jails. In Lake County, we are not, sheriff's department, I say "we," it's not me, it's the sheriff's department, but the sheriff's department is not going into homes, businesses, or anywhere else in the community, and serving warrants, or pulling people out, or any of that stuff. To be clear, that is not happening here in Lake County. So, I just wanted to reassure you.
Ma'am, thanks for being so patient.
Patricia Denny, 7465 Mountain Quail Place, Concord. I've been going to the protests at the sheriff's, in front of the sheriff's office once a month, and they've been pretty well-attended by people who are worried about, very worried about the moral implications of all of this also. So, I wrote a letter to the editor, to the, to the News Herald, and thanking them for sending one of their reporters to that, one of those demonstrations against the sheriff's 287G agreement, to cooperate and assist with federal ICE agents. I learned a lot in the article in the News Herald that I had not known, including the fact that only five out of 88 counties' sheriffs have done this in Ohio. And so, that, that was one of my big questions. Anyway, I have three uncles from the Glenville area of Cleveland, where I was born. They were all grandsons of Irish Catholic immigrants, from one Cleveland family of eight kids. I knew them all. And they served in World War II in Italy, France, and the Pacific, between '41 and '45. Today, they could be legitimately asking, "What was the point of my service if immigrants very much like my grandparents can be treated as dangerous criminals, captured and locked up in county jails?" Very legitimately, I think they would be able to ask. Anyway, the large banner that the demonstrators displayed at one of the protests at the sheriff's office, by young men and women, said, "Jesus would not deport anyone." And that, that's the Jesus of Catholic social teaching that I have learned through 18 years of Catholic education. So, that is the Jesus that I know, despite the very twisted and violence-laden messaging that is coming from the deep and extremely wealthy promoters of never-ending wars for The heart of the Gospels is, "Love thy neighbor." That means everybody. So, it's time for more people to start understanding those connections. Jesus was about the most vulnerable people, not those who profit from people's misery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Phillips. I live in Lee Wright Township, 12898 Painesville Warren Road. I just really would like to get a little bit of clarification on this 287G, and so hopefully the sheriff can help us with that. As I was reading it over, and you say that this is only going to happen when somebody's already stopped, but as I read the language, it says, "In the course of a routine encounter." So, to me, when I'm thinking about what might be a routine encounter, it might be if I want to report a crime, if I'm a witness to a crime and I see something, is that a routine encounter? If I am a victim of crime, of crime myself, is that a routine encounter? So, my question is, if, if somebody is going to check whether there's an ICE detainer in the course of a routine encounter, does that include these other things? Not just when there's somebody who's legitimately stopped for a reason, does that include when you go to someone's house and they're reporting a, a crime? Are you checking the immigration status of everyone there? As Father Reedy was saying, when you pull a car over, and, so the person who's driving the car would legitimately need to provide their ID, but other people would not necessarily have to. Are they, or is the immigration status of everybody in the car being checked? If it is, then we're creating a much unsafe, more unsafe community, because people are going to be reluctant to report crimes, they're going to be reluctant to go to the sheriff about something, they're going to be reluctant to, to be a witness to anything. And this is legitimately what has happened in other communities. And so, I would, I'd like some clarification of that. And then I just want to say something about policies in and of themselves. You were talking about, I'm, I'm a systematic theologian, and so Catholic systematic theologian, so I understand about the policies that, or about what happened with the priests very intimately. And we had to put policies in place in the Catholic Church, so that that stuff wouldn't happen again. The reason why we are all looking at these policies so carefully, is so that, so that things that are bad don't happen. And so, there's no ill will, I don't think, on either side. It's, it's the community trying to talk to each other, and make sure that our community stays safe. That's the thing that we have to keep in front of us, make sure that our friends, our neighbors, the people who go to school with our kids, everybody else stays safe. And that's why you put policies in place, and that's why you examine them and reexamine them. So, I really would like some clarification on what this routine encounter means, because that's, that's the glaring problem that I see on this, is what, what that is, and, and how wide of a problem that could be. And my second, second concern is, is really the money, like, who, who's paying for all these extra checks? And who's paying for all that? I think we are. And so, we have a right to say, we would prefer that that not happen. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just to answer some of the concerns. First of all, Mr. Lima and I have known each other for years, and in fact, we just had, what, an hour and a half discussion in my office regarding 287? First of all, on the guardrails coming off, they are coming off in a lot of jurisdictions. I can't speak for law enforcement everywhere throughout the United States. Here in Lake County, how do you ensure guardrails are kept, in terms of professionalism, ethics, adherence to policies, adherence to constitutional law? A number of ways. First of all, it's in hiring. We don't hire everybody, just because you put an application in. And unfortunately, what you're discussing is, a lot of places are, because they need people. Well, I'll just take whatever I can get to fill. We don't. We'll go without as a sheriff's office before we hire individuals that don't meet our qualifications, our standards. That's not only in terms of passing an academy, but it's their lifestyle, it's their background. We do home visits, work visits, all, all of those things. You hire the right individuals, then you put them through good training, and we have exceptional training. And training is not just, here's the law, it's, here's- And training is not just, here's the law, it's here's how we act as an organization, here's how we treat individuals. Despite whatever you encounter, you will maintain these standards at all time. And I think we have done that, and so it's an organizational culture that is needed in a community to show that law enforcement can be trusted. And I think we have worked to achieve that and continue to do that. There are three branches of government. Legislative makes the law, in simplicity, makes the law. The executive branch, which is law enforcement is under, enforces the law. We don't make the law, we enforce it. The judicial branch interprets it and then looks at guilt or innocence in terms of that. That's not the responsibility of the police officer on the street. Where we have come into difficulty as a society is when the executive branch tries to be the judiciary or the legislator, to pick and choose what laws we will or will not enforce. That is the danger to society. Our job in terms of keeping the guardrails is to ensure we know our place as a law enforcement In terms of, the lady asked, in terms of encounters, whenever we encounter an individual, whether it's a group of car, a group in a car, or an individual, we ask for identifications. Not because they're Hispanic, not because they're white, or Jewish, or black, or Amish, or whatever we may be talking about, we ask everyone. And it is the equality of ensuring that your policies are done with every individual we encounter. Make sure we are doing our job as the executive branch of government. And my job as sheriff, Chief Izzo's in the back, who's the chief deputy, and every supervisor is to ensure that we have good, we have good policies, we have good procedures, we have good training, and we make sure people are doing exactly what they're supposed to do. That's our job, is to enforce that and make sure that's done every day in our community. That's the assurance we have. Is there any basis of that trust that we're not just saying that? As I said earlier, 36 years, I think, is a pretty good track record. Thank you.
So to be clear, once you do ask for somebody's ID, do you then check their immigration status? And so my point being that if someone is raped, do they have to choose between whether, and they are here because they overstated their visa, do they have to choose whether they would report that crime or be deported? So if your house is robbed, if you witness a crime, are you going to, and somebody is going to check your ID, that's one thing, but are you going to check their immigration status? So does somebody in the community who, our community is broadened, and we have people everywhere who could be witnessing crimes, and so will they not be willing to come and give a report about what they saw? We make the community less safe if we're going to check the immigration status of everyone in a routine encounter. So that's the thing I'm trying to get clarification on.
Commissioner, if I may?
Yes.
Just so you're aware, you bring up a really good point. Victims of crime, there are visas available for folks in that situation. They don't want people who may be here illegally afraid to call the police if they're raped or anything else. So that is something that's not taken into account by law enforcement. We want to protect that person, we want to protect that family. So just, there is a visa process for victims of crime specifically.
I'm talking about in the 287G, as I'm reading the language, it says that in the course of a routine encounter, that they would run a check to see whether there's an ICE detainer on a person.
Okay.
So if I am raped and there's an ICE detainer on me already, that when I want to report that crime, is somebody going to run to see, I'm a victim of a crime, I'm not a criminal, I'm a victim of a crime, is someone going to run a check on me to see whether or not there's an ICE detainer? So do I have to choose between reporting that crime or being deported? If there's somebody who could make that more clear what I'm asking?
No, I think I understand what you're asking, it's a fair question. I don't work in the field per se in terms of, I'm not a sheriff's deputy. However, I can tell you from prosecutorial, and we work with law enforcement, and if someone who is a victim of crime is here illegally, we are not going to deport them per se. We are going to use them as witnesses to get the bad guys or people off the street who committed these crimes. That's an important point, and that visa process is in place to let, get it out to the community that we don't want people afraid to report crime. That's counterproductive to law enforcement. So that's, I don't know if I'm answering your question. You had a slew of hypotheticals earlier, and I was thinking, oh my gosh. But what I'm trying to say is, no, a victim of crime is going to be protected, period, and eligible for the visa process.
I'm sorry, this gentleman's been waiting for quite a while. Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Very glad to be here. And I lived in China for over 30 years, but I love this country, lived in this country for 38 years.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Tian Lun Jian, and live in Cleveland now. I'm going to share with you my understanding of the threat of the Chinese Communist Party to this world, to this country. First, let us make sure we understand Chinese Communist Party is not China, does not equal Chinese people or China. Chinese Communist Party is evil. How evil it is? I'm a Falun Gong practitioner. We follow truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance. But just because of these three words that we follow, we have been persecuted for 26 years. How severe it is? People's Falun Gong practitioners have been organ harvested for 26 years. And how is it related here? Example, a Falun Gong practitioner was cut open his chest for 14 inches, his partial liver and lungs were cut. But fortunately, on the second operation of the organ harvesting, he escaped from the operation bed. And with the help of U.S. Undersecretary of the State, he came to the United States. Is that safe? No. He had been frequently followed, watched, and car tire been slashed, and his house been broken into it, and created a car accident trying to kill him. Even in the United States, he has been in Washington DC, in New York, experienced that. And this is not only his problem. In OSU Columbus, the cars of Falun Gong practitioners, just because there are three words, truthfulness, compassion, forbearance, then the cars were damaged, cars tire being slashed. And talking about, I think maybe you all know, Confucius Institute programs in university, high school, even primary schools, they have influenced so much. Sang Ting Ting, a graduate from, no, High Ashland University, he went to Indiana to teach Chinese. He taught, she taught very well, but suddenly she, her position was eliminated because the Chinese Confucius Institute program. And they want to control who to teach, what to teach, and all the behaviors. And they have also despise. So this is a concrete example that I know personally. And talking about what are the influence? For instance, I myself was receiving two death calls, one when I was in the office, the other in midnight, during the, at home, got a call. And many, many of those things happening in China. Why is it the Chinese Communist Party control the Chinese people using propaganda? But they are not limited within the Chinese border. They spend $70, $7 billion each year. They bought all the Chinese newspaper, radio, television, everything in Chinese. Those, about 95% of those media are controlled or filled with money. For instance, in Erie newspaper, the Chinese newspaper, about two or three years ago, published an article blaming Falun Gong this and that. And then I saw it. I happened to know the publisher of the Erie newspaper. I talked to her, why did you publish these kind of defaming articles? There's nothing like that. She said, no, we didn't publish. I showed the paper to her, what it said. She said, oh, that's not the article we write. I said, it's on your paper. She said, it's directly from the Chinese government in China, that article was imported. And this happened not only in Cleveland, in Toronto, another newspaper, it's same thing. Actually, Chinese is doing this all all over the world. And they publish their ads insert in the New York Times, Washington Post, and so on. But when people read, they didn't know these are the Chinese ideology. They thought it's the newspaper is doing that. They spent $7 billion each year. For the news publishers, I think the judgment is twisted. They do not judge according to the value of American value, but they judge what they can get the money. So, and what did they do? The Chinese paper, Chinese using the American newspaper as the Western media's ideas and trying to say, oh, the New York Times and so on, they are saying so and so. They said, US is so bad, and Japan is so bad, democracy is so bad. So the whole country is being foolish, not only the whole country, but Chinese in other countries as well. If you have Chinese colleagues, when you ask an opinion, do not presume she or he will have the same moral value as the in US. What they read is only Chinese Communist Party's ideology, the propaganda. So when they say this or that, you may have to consider it, a second thought. And many, many things. I listed about 20 areas, aspects, each with hard evidence and stories to support that, but I do not have the time to go there. For instance, in Cleveland, we promote Shenyin. How many of you have seen Shenyin? You see, and you see, right? And Shenyin is such a great show. They perform 800 performances each year in 200 cities around the world. There are so many, and so this year, Cleveland, we didn't get it because they are so busy. They have eight troops. Yeah, but what the Chinese Communist Party do? They send 250 bomb threats and mass shooting threats to the theaters they perform Shenyin. Example, Kennedy Center in February this year, when Shenyin was going to start the show, they send a bomb threat there. So the operation had to stop to investigate if there are bombs or so. And when we promote Shenyin in Cleveland Clinic Foundation, the first year went very well. There's still patients and doctors like it so much. The second year, we applied, and they also welcomed us. But the next day at 10 o'clock, we are going to start the event. At 6 o'clock PM today, I received an email, cancel our booths there. And then I asked why, it's, everything is ready, they said. Because a Chinese doctor was on board of CCF for Asia Advisory Board, for Asia Affairs. She says Falun Gong is political, Shenyin is political. The same thing happened in Columbus, and Asia Affairs, they did very well, but then the Chinese professor, he came on board, and he said it's political. And in Cincinnati, this year in February, Shenyin was going to start. They called the police and saying the next building to the theater was on fire. So eight trucks, eight engines came, but he found out there's nothing. The second day, the performance going on, they still play the same trick, saying the garage is on fire. saying the garage is on fire. So the eight engines came again. The same thing happened again and again. In Japan, when the Shenyin is on the show, someone pulled the fire alarm button. So the fire alarm is going on, everyone has to leave their audience. These things happened again and again. About organ harvesting, people think that's only in China. No, now it's spread all over the world. And you may have watched TV that Xi Jinping and Putin and the Canadian, Canadian president, they walked upstairs. North Korea president. And hot mic caught what they said. Xi Jinping said, now people can live hundred fifty years. Then Putin asked why? He said, because the organs can be transplanted, so live to hundred fifty years. And actually, after this, the Chinese military and doctors, they reviewed what has been going on. They have a nine eighty-one project just to let the high-ranking officials in China to live longer. So they have began these operations about fifteen years, no, about twenty years ago, doing the operations. In the past, they use Falun Gong practitioners, and then gradually move to Christians, and then Uger and Tibetans. But now it's rampant to all, all over the society. One said, the baby, one day, two day, and five days, they were operated, got the organs. You see, this happens all the, so evil. Yet do not think anything Communist, Chinese Communist Party cannot do. They are evil. Anything can be happened, yeah. When you are making any decision, if, yeah, need to consider this. Otherwise, it's too dangerous. Thank you.
Deanna.
Thank you, and I'm sorry that I'm trying to jump the line. I apologize, I have a board meeting to go to. I also apologize, I typically dress more professionally when I come before the commissioners. So commissioners, we had a food distribution today at Menor Schools. And so just to speak to that, as you all know, we help with those fresh produce distributions. And we were at Menor again this morning, and I left there at ten oh five. By ten oh five, we had served over two hundred cars. It doesn't start until ten AM. The need is not going down. And so I wanted to come here today specifically. And I didn't know that the sheriff and chief deputy Izzo were going to be here. So this works out perfectly. I wanted to take the time to publicly thank the commissioners and the sheriff and chief Izzo for their support of jail and bail last month. It's a new event for us. We rely heavily on our fundraising events as our employee campaigns become more difficult to manage. And we raised twenty-three thousand dollars this year, which is a record for us with that particular event. And just to give you an idea of what that means to the members of our community here, if we broke that down evenly amongst our four pillars, that twenty-three thousand dollars would equate to close to seven hundred calls to 211, forty medical visits to our free clinic, and provides the equivalent of one month of shelter for four unhoused individuals. And then also would give four hundred sixteen teens access to Ending the Silence, which is a program provided by NAMI. So that twenty-three thousand dollars is certainly significant to us. In addition to thanking the commissioners for their support and the sheriff, I also wanted to extend the invitation. I know that you've gotten it multiple times at this point. We are trying to have a poverty simulation for our elected officials and local leaders next Friday, October twenty-fourth, from nine to twelve. The reason we feel that this is so incredibly important is that many of the issues and challenges that are facing our community leaders and our most vulnerable friends and neighbors goes back to poverty or that group that's working and having a hard time making ends meet. So when we think about workforce development, entertaining employees, it's that access to affordable childcare, it's the ability to have transportation, it's having food on your table, all of those things. So certainly, we would love to see the commissioners attend and participate and, you know, continue to advocate for us amongst your peers, the other elected officials, to have a good turnout next Friday. But again, thank you, and thank you sheriff and chief Izzo. Really appreciate the support. Thanks.
Thank you. I think a lot of people wanted to see Commissioner Evers get locked up, so.
They did.
Always a great fundraiser.
It turned into money for us.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I do feel compelled to say, the main reason that I'm in this country, and we're very blessed to have organizations like the United Way. We're very blessed to be protected by our sheriff's department. The main reason that my family is in this country is decades ago, when communism took over what is now Slovenia, my grandfather was put on a death list because he was a local elected official, and communists do not like elections. He went to church, and communists do not like Christians or any faith. And he owned a small lumber mill, and man, do they hate capitalists. So he, he was firing on every cylinder in the wrong way. But as the family story goes, fortunately, they sent his brother-in-law to kill the family. And he said, I'm not a monster, I'm not going to kill my sister, I'm not going to kill you, but this is your last chance. They won't make a mistake like this, you need to find a way out of the country. And like so many Slovenians, he and his family fled to the greater Cleveland area, eventually started a new middle town, worked their way here, and were blessed to make a life. Now, they started not speaking English. It was a hard start to life, having to build your own house. But they, they had opportunity, and more importantly, they were safe here because we didn't have a socialist or a communist government, which is the most dangerous thing on earth. I mean, the countless tens and hundreds of millions of people who've suffered or been murdered by socialist and communist governments, whether it's the National Socialist German Workers Party, whether it's Pol Pot, whether it's the Soviet Union, the incredible human suffering that communism and socialism has brought to this world. It's something we all need to stand against. Because it's not just a difference of opinion or philosophy. Communism is evil. You know, many of us like to talk about no kings. Well, a king, a tyrant, a dictator, that's what communism is all about. You can put different flourishes on it. You could say you have a divine right and you serve as a king, or you could have a fake election and say that you're a dictator or a president. But at the end of the day, communism is all about a handful of people taking whatever they want, whether it's your organs, your money, your freedom, and telling you what to do. We are so blessed to live in a country where our vote matters, where we actually choose our leaders. And if they don't do a good job in our estimation, we can boot them in the next two to four years. It's incredible blessing, and it's a remarkable American experiment. I think we take it for granted because we grew up here. You know, I was born and raised in the United States. Unlike my father, who had to come here at the age of eleven, you know, with his family's life on the line. I was blessed to grow up in the United States. And it's hard to imagine a world that's so dark, where the Communist Party would send your brother to kill you and your husband. I mean, imagine that. I mean, we like to talk about discrimination and bias, and those are evils that have to be dealt with. But you don't really know discrimination until your government tries to kill you. That is a completely different level of discrimination. And we need to remember that that's the evil that we all collectively are fighting against. And I can't emphasize enough that every generation is one generation away from losing freedom. You know, we can take it for granted if we want to, but there are forces in the world that want to take away our freedom. Because at the end of the day, we're weird. In the United States, with a middle class, we have a voice and a vote, and we can actually make a difference in other people's lives. That's weird. And everywhere else in the world, there are a bunch of rich people, and they essentially own everybody else. And you can call it communism, you can call it a dictatorship, you can call it an oligarchy. However you want to name it, it's a bunch of rich people running the show and telling the rest of us what to do. And I, for one, don't want to live in that world. So we need to make sure that we call out evil when we see it, and we don't let the government get so big and so powerful that it can ultimately take our freedoms away. Amen?
Amen.
My name is Kathleen Baca. I live at nine one seven four Regency Woods Drive in Kirtland in Lake County. I had no intention of speaking today, but I have one question, and I have one comment. And the question is actually for the sheriff. I've been hearing, you know, through the course of this morning, about the wonderful training that the sheriff's department gives its employees and the police department, and how Painesville has worked very hard to see that the law enforcement arms of our county work justly with the immigrants of our, of our county. And that makes me very happy to hear. What I want to know, I guess, and this is where my comment kind of comes in, is then why do we need to work with ICE? When ICE is an arm of the government, the national government, which is not behaving as democratically as a lot of us would like it to behave? So, so far, I have not been personally affected by anything that's happening in our country. I expect it will happen when I lose my Medicare and I lose my state teacher's retirement pension, if those happen, because they're being discussed. And I'm kind of nervous here talking, and why I'm having a hard time getting out what I'm trying to say. But it, it seems to me that if we have everything in place that we need in our county to keep justice and law, the rule of law in our county, why do we need to make any kind of an agreement with an organization which we see in other parts of the country behaving unlawfully? So that's, that's my comment and my question. Thank you.
And I think, and I think I have the answer, Mr. President. I think I have the answer, and if I'm wrong, sir, correct me. The two eighty-seven G agreements that have been entered into is because I am not a lawyer. So I'm going to try and speak as intelligently as a lowly commissioner and financial advisor can, sir. But we don't have local or state laws on how to handle somebody that is illegally here from a federal immigration standpoint, right? I don't think the states or the localities set immigration policies or immigration laws, right? So those are federal laws that have to be adhered to. So the state can't have a policy or put something in place, which is why the federal agency, ICE, has to have an arrangement with local law enforcement officers so that in the course of a stop, or in the case of somebody who's currently in our jail, if we arrest somebody for whatever crime, pick it, theft, and they get processed through the system, and they go through, I don't know, they go to a, a hearing, and they bail gets set, then normally the process is, okay, according to the law, we release this person back out in the community. Two eighty-seven G and the other arrangements that they have are so that, okay, we've arrested this person, they are here illegally. We then contact and have the relationship with ICE to say, hey, we have somebody in our jail, we're getting ready to release them. They're here illegally, would you like to come and do whatever ICE does and handle the situation from there? And then have the federal laws for immigration. Am I incorrect, sir? Sheriff's notches head, yes, an affirmative, yes.
Yeah, my name is Dan Phillips, Leroy Township, one two eight nine eight, Paintsville Warren Road. Myself and several other members of the community met with the prosecutor and sheriff back when the policy at the jail was implemented with ICE. And that policy's been in place since 2015. That policy requires that the, after whatever reason someone was taken to the jail and put in the jail, if there's a detainer, or if there's a question by the jail that the person may be undocumented, they will hold them for forty-eight hours. So that has been in place for ten years. I went to the meeting with Dave Lima, an hour and a half, with the sheriff recently. And I, I asked him several times why they implemented this agreement, these two agreements. There's two agreements that have been entered with ICE. And I was given the answers. The answers were to formalize, that was the number one reason, to formalize what they currently do. And the second was that they wanted to have more consistent implementation of what they do based on the federal administrations that are in place. And an example was given that the previous administration of the federal government did not always pick up the person or, or follow through with getting back to the jail if they're holding somebody forty-eight hours. So they would have to release them after forty-eight hours. So I guess the question is, for the sheriff and for here, is, is it indeed making us safer by entering into an agreement where, like Kathy, the previous speaker, said? The sheriff has talked about how safe the community has been. The sheriff has talked about the, the training, all the things that are in place. The sheriff does not need the federal policy to implement a safe community. I mean, that's pretty clear, based on everything the sheriff's said. These are convenience things that the sheriff wants to do. But it also is a distraction because he has to take eleven of his highest officers and take them through training for these agreements. They now are going to be able to drive people to the Georgia County facility. They're going to be doing ICE duties. As several people have said, that, that is something ICE should be doing. They're being well-funded. And we need our officers to be focused on the safety of the community. It's a distraction, it doesn't make us safer. And I know it's a judgment by the, by the sheriff. He did not need the approval of the commissioners to do this. I understand that because he didn't enter into the third agreement. But it is something that is, is a burden on his officers because now they have to be well-versed to do it right. They have to work with ICE on more things than they currently do. They currently already have a relationship with ICE. They get, they get those retainers and verified through ICE. They're going to put a computer into the jail to, to manage ICE directly, so they're going to get trained on how to use the computer. There's a lot of things that, they're busy. They don't, they do not necessarily need this to make the community safer. And in fact, based on what everybody's saying, the federal government calls this a force multiplier. And what does that mean? It means they're using local law enforcement to multiply their policies. They do not need a force multiplier in Lake County. Lake County's doing fine, just like it is. So I would question it. I don't see where it's really making us any better. In fact, it's making people more afraid. Because when they heard the word force multiplier, no matter what you tell the community, that sounds scary. It sounds scary to me. So I know the sheriff doesn't have the intent to scare the public. We did ask, did he talk to the Hispanic community before he implemented a policy? And the answer was no. He basically said, I can't talk to everybody in the community about every policy I implement, and I make judgments based on the risk I think it, it imposes, and I'm willing to take that risk. I take risks every day. That, that is the response the sheriff gave to us. I think that's fair, that he said what he said. I'm not questioning what he said. I'm just saying, from a citizen's perspective, the value added to us is not there. We, we are protected. We don't, we don't need to, I'm, I'm not saying I agree with the current undocumented policy they have in place. We talked about that ten years ago when it was implemented. I'm not in agreement with, you know, especially the part about everybody needs to be asked in an encounter. I, I don't agree with that at all. But the bottom line is, I just want to make it clear that we're, we do not need this policy to implement something we already don't, we already have it in place. And we have an undocumented policy, if everybody's not aware of that. And it's been in place for ten years. The only other thing I wanted to say, and I'm not sure the commissioners know this, maybe they do, is that there was a letter sent on January seventeenth from the ACLU to all the sheriffs in Ohio. And this clearly spells out And this clearly spells out why local communities should not implement the two eighty-seven G policy, and it goes through everything we said today. And it has all the references to all the historical documents that back up what they're saying, and this is all the key, you know, the policy directors, face ACLU, all of the, like the Ohio Immigrant Alliance Director, Lintromani, I mean, this is, I think this is a well-researched document. So, if you haven't read it, I encourage you to read it and discuss it. So, thank you.
I just want to, feel free to stand here. I want my law enforcement officers trained to the nth degree. So, with all due respect, sir, I am never going to be against any type of training, first of all.
Okay.
If we disagree with the force multiplier or whatever, once again, that is a federal government agency, initiative, directive, whatever. The president is up for election every four years, the House of Representatives is up for election every two years, okay? And so, as a society, if the guardrails of which we're concerned are coming down and the constitutionality and how we treat each other and what Christian values we may or may not want to put into government, we have an opportunity, and I would say an obligation, to handle that every two years. So, while I share your concerns, as a board of commissioners and a sheriff, there is only so much that we're able to do. And unfortunately, at some point, we're going to have a conversation about taxes here. I'll say it now, I wish we paid more taxes locally where we can control it and less taxes at the federal level. And then, we don't have to adhere to maybe all of the rules and regulations that we don't like that apply to the other fifty states. And so, I just want to try and remind folks that, once again, we are county commissioners, and he is a county sheriff. When he talked about, I don't want to mean to correct the gentleman, but when he talked about law enforcement in Lake County, he handles law enforcement for the county sheriff. Manner Police Department has a police chief, Willoughby Police Department has a police chief, right? So, we have these separations to the fact that they're formalizing something in this agreement. If the sheriff says they're formalizing something and the prosecutor's office says they're formalizing something, then I would like that to be formalized because we live aside, we live in a society where lawsuits and court battles are how we determine what goes on here, right? As the sheriff said, we got three different branches of government, and there is a judicial branch here that handles those conversations. And so, I, from a formalization of that, yes, and if this is what happened fifteen or ten years ago and we're formalizing it now, great. My only last concern about the encounters, and I understand that if there's one person driving the car and five people in the car, why are we asking for the identification of the five people in the car? And I'm reminded that here recently, out at Madison, what was it, five twenty-eight or Vroomin there, the gas station, whatever that new gas station is out there, that there happens to be, I think there's one Madison police officer on duty parked across from that gas station, and at three in the morning, they happened to notice that there was an adult with someone that looked younger than eighteen, and they intervened and it ended up that three children in the car were being sex trafficked. And so, unfortunately, I respect the law enforcement's officers' requirement to know exactly who they're dealing with. I understand that's unfortunate, right? You got to get in transportation, you got to get in the car. But they're trying to do their job to make sure, once again, they don't know the age of the individual in the car. I know we don't, you know, the Supreme Court's ruling about ethnicity being probable cause, how about age? How do I know if somebody's sixteen, twenty, twenty-four? And so, I think, I hope, that all they're trying to do is just ascertain who's in the car. And in the course of that, if somebody's here illegally, the federal guidelines and directives and initiatives under this administration want us to be able to deport that person or handle that person. And so, once again, I appreciate you coming in, I appreciate the dialogue and the conversation. I just want to reassure folks to understand the differences of what we are able to control and what we are not able to control and how we're trying, and I think the sheriff and his folks are doing the best job they can given the circumstances that they have, so...
Yeah, no, I agree that they're doing a great job and they're effective in what they're doing. There were fifteen people last year that they put under that policy, you know, the one they have in the jail for the forty-eight hours they held them, there's been twenty-two this year in Lake County. So, it's manageable the way they've been doing it. I guess that was my point, and I understand the federal government formalization is like another step, but I don't think that's going to, like I said, it does nothing to help us. They're already verifying people that are underage and other things like you're saying. I totally agree that that's already being done, and I'm so happy that they're doing that. So, I have nothing bad to say about the department, I'm just, I'm looking at it from a logical standpoint of, is the pros and cons really a benefit to our county? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to add something real quick, too. We get along with our sheriff as a board here, and that may sound like, oh, yeah, that's great, but that doesn't happen in every county in Ohio, doesn't happen throughout the United States. We like to support our sheriff's office, and we've done that throughout the last few years by opening a training facility that's available to every department in this county to get constant training. Police have constant training. State laws change, local laws change, federal laws change on a daily basis. They have to stay on top of that stuff. Sometimes it's after an incident, sometimes, you know, many times before, but they are under constant training. As the local mayor, I had to answer a question or try to answer a question, we used to have a circus that came to town that had elephants and stuff, and someone asked the question of our police chief, what would you do if that elephant was charging down the street? Do you train for that? He goes, we train for everything. Do we specifically know elephants go down the street? No, but, you know, we're fully armed and capable to handle the situation. Well, those are things you would never think of in law enforcement. So, they are constantly training for what's ahead of them, and I, you know, again, I think we also give them the ability to hire the best people. We didn't always have that ability here, and I've seen the sheriff and the chief deputy be able to handle things internally, externally, expediently, by changing policy, moving manpower, whatever they had to do without us having to intervene, which is good because he's an elected official just like we are. So, I just want to say we support our sheriff, our, in our sheriff's office. So, I've firsthand have been happy to get that training facility and do the other things they do to be successful.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Wu. I live in Fairport Harbor, so I've been here over ten, almost ten years. So, I'm proud of be a citizen of the United States. In two thousand eight, I legally came to this country as an international student. I was arrested, detained by the Chinese Communist Party in two thousand five. In order to legally came here, I spent three years to study English, to prepare my application of American university. So, I know I have to respect the laws of the country which I was going to enter, so I want to, came here legally. After that, I applied asylum, the asylum office, USCIS office probably processed my case, then I became, I can live here safely since then. In two thousand fifteen, I legally naturalized to become an American citizen. So, I want to share something with my fellow citizens. As long as a person legally came here, the person doesn't need to worry about the harassment from a police officer. So, I've been here almost ten years and nobody, no officer came to my house to interrogate me, so nobody bothered me. So, I really hope every person can come to this country legally. It's a protection to them as well because you have the legal status and people respect you, and people can protect you when you need help. And I know last four years, a few years, and quite many millions of people came to this country illegally. And I want to tell them, I want to tell the people, I really appreciate Americans speak up for them who didn't have the opportunity to speak here. It's very vulnerable for those illegal immigrants, and living here is not easy. The language barrier, even I studied English for two decades before, like almost two decades, almost twenty years before I came here, the fluency and the comprehension still an issue. So, if you want to be safely live in another country, and you have to be get a good preparation before I came here. And I know a lot of illegal immigrants, especially females, they have, in order to survive, they got, they are targeted by other bad guys. So, that's the issue, lady mentioned if the people raped, and so, that's, people have to take responsibility of their own safety before other people can take care of you. So, that's very, I think, logical understanding of coming here, before I come here. And I think last few years, I saw the division in this country. That's not something I want to see. There are good Chinese Americans, when they saw this happen, they said, American becomes, it's different now, and they become more and more like a Chinese Communist Party ruling. This is something I want to share. I work for, one thing is for the illegal immigrants, and I work for USCIS as, my company is contracted by USCIS, so I know the legally and properly process each person who apply asylum. They spend hours, they spend American citizens' dollars to process each case. And one person, one time said, the Chinese police officers stayed in Mexico to take, like shoot videos so other illegal immigrants can know how to illegally cross the mountain, cross the river, came to the United States. That's something different. That's like, the police officer did that, that's the government-sponsored action, it's not a personal action. So, this is from my personal professional experience, and I also want to mention, the battlefield is not overseas anymore, it's the battlefield, battlefield is in the United States. And the internet bring the people cross ocean and closer and closer. I saw the division operated by Chinese Communist Party and/or backed by the Chinese Communist Party. It's not something, you see all of a sudden, Americans become so aggressive to each other, that's something really concerned, and a lot of things going on, I couldn't, I don't have time, much time to go on each of them. And one thing I want to mention, the Chinese Communist Party prepared the anti-warfare. I heard this in nineteen ninety-five, in my first year college class, a military officer gave the lecturing. That time, he said, his lecturing is very boring, was very boring, and then almost most of the students just fell asleep. And one thing I remember clearly and also asked him, he said, anti-warfare, mentioned the biological warfare and the chemical warfare, that was nineteen ninety-five, the upside world, understand anti-warfare in nineteen ninety-nine through a translation into English. So, that time, I asked him a question. So, if you do biological warfare and your enemies died and your citizen died, the officer grinned, he said, the enemy died. So, the purpose is to let the enemy die and they don't care their own citizens. So, that's why when pandemic, like COVID-nineteen pandemic occurred, I told my accounting professors and this is like a bioweapon, and he didn't understand that. The American people weren't aware of what's going on from, in this country and why the malign intention of Communist Party. So, we have to be prepared. And in China, not just Wuhan lab, there are multiple underground, underground and also they got bioweaps in mountains. So, they got prepared, we got prepared, they prepared, they said, if we didn't use this weapon, our enemy, the United States is going to use this weapon against us. So, I really want, whoever listen to the information, this Communist Party is our enemy, and I don't want to see Americans get divided by the influence of Chinese Communist Party. And they are conducting multi-dimensional attack on us with endless strategies. We got to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I will say, one thing that jumps out to me as we talk about loving thy neighbor, we do need to remember that there's a very greedy element to promoting illegal immigration, which is that businesses want second-class citizens, that they don't have to pay minimum wage, they aren't members of unions, they have no protections, they're afraid that if they bring the employer to justice for violating labor law, that they're going to be deported. And let's be real, there's a very big profit motive to illegal immigration, and so, you know, we have to be honest about how our society has participated in that. And I know that our nurseries have worked very hard to improve, but there was a lot of taking advantage of people in the past, and Lake County benefited from it. I hate to say it, there are some people who got rich off of folks who took advantage of them, and that's why illegal immigration is a multi-dimensional problem. It's not just about, it's not just about being sympathetic to the person who's here, it's about protecting the people who might consider coming here and not realize that they're going to be sex trafficked, that they're going to be taken advantage of by their employer because they don't have the same legal protections as a citizen. So, part of loving thy neighbor is stopping illegal immigration in its tracks so that greedy businesses in the United States don't, A, get to take advantage of illegal immigrants and B, deny jobs to Americans and unions and a living wage so we have a real middle class. I mean, one thing that frustrates me so much is it all comes down to trying to destroy the middle class. They don't want people to be able to retire on a STIRS pension, and by the way, I'm in STIRS, too, and I'm nervous, too, because I got longer to go before I'll be eligible like you. And when people ask me, what's your highest political aspiration? I say, to be a fully retired teacher on STIRS, although every year that goes by, I think that may be a more and more ambitious aspiration, it may be, it may be higher than I get. But I don't want to let the businesses off the hook who have profited off illegal immigration, who've encouraged it, they need to be condemned. And when they say with crocodile tears, oh, ICE, oh, don't deport, oh, don't close the border, what they're really saying is, I don't want to pay an American a living wage, and I don't want to pay those illegal immigrants a living wage either. I don't want them to ever have citizenship, I don't want citizens. I want to pay people the bare minimum, and eventually, I want to treat them like property. I want to take their organs, I want to use them up until they drop dead, I don't want to give them health care, I don't want to give them retirement or pension or unions. I mean, that's what we're really talking about here, folks. So, it all boils down to, these damn rich communists and tyrants want to take advantage of every last one of us, and if they can replace you with someone who has no civil rights, well, they'd be all the happier.
Ma'am, you're right.
My name is Krista Zivkovich, and I live here in Painesville City. My husband...
My husband and I have lived in Painesville City about 48 years. We belong to St. Mary's Parish here in Painesville. So I feel like here in Painesville, we're in the thick of it, right? We have our greatest Mexican Hispanic population here in Painesville. And I think there's many other places in the county that are kind of unaware, untouched by this and this discussion. The murder that happened several years ago that was referred to, both the victim and the person who committed that horrible crime were both members of St. Mary Parish. And as it was also said, that that was handled locally. We didn't have to bring in federal, I guess. The victim of that crime, the surviving spouse of that terrible crime forgave, you know, the person who committed that crime. I think most of us thought, you know, when this immigration effort was undertaken, that again, we always thought it was going to be the worst of the worst, right? That's what we thought. And everybody was like, okay, we're okay with that. But what we've seen happening is people are detained and for some frankly minor thing, they're put, they're put in detention. And then we don't know what happens after that. There, some people are languishing in detention for fairly small things, not a horrible crime like was committed years ago. So that's, I think that's the part that we're wondering about. So is this, this going to happen to many, many people in my city of Painesville? Where I have to say, my husband and I cherish the diversity in the city. And I know diversity is a bad word now, right? But we cherish the diversity that we have here. And I'll just, so I just want to caution, is this what's going to happen? These minor infractions are going to turn into, you know, a lengthy detention or whatever. This is what we don't want to see. And just recently, and of course, I don't know all the details, but a young man was taken outside of his home. He was allegedly, I guess, just putting his tools into his car in the morning, getting ready to go to work. He was taken, for whatever reason, I don't know why, he was taken, but he was taken downtown, detained for several days. This was just happened last week. During those few days that he was in detention, his partner suffered a miscarriage. Five-month-old baby miscarriage. Again, parishioners of St. Mary's Parish. And we don't know, of course, we don't know what caused that, right? We don't know that, and I know that, we don't know that. But this is a kind of thing, this is the, the pain and the, you know, the suffering and the fear that, that it's really families have, you know? And I think we don't want to lose sight of that. Pat talked about, you know, the gospel values and who do we deport and who would Jesus deport? We have to think about these, the families that have been here for many, 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 many years, decades, working, earning a living, paying their taxes. This is who, this is who we're concerned about. We're not concerned about the horrible criminals that are doing horrible things. But we're concerned about our community and the people that we've lived beside for decades. And we know them. And because they came for a better life, for their children, in so many cases, in the majority of cases. This, this is what we want to protect. This is what we're concerned about. This is why we're here. Thank you.
Sir.
I forgot to thank the commissioners for having this public hearing. It is important we have these conversations and try to tone down the rhetoric. I'm given to emotion. You know, some of my partners here are very analytical. I'm the opposite. And I deal in personal stories. Just two quick points. Commissioner Plasnik, you were talking about the hiring police officers in the city of Cleveland. I would like to remind him that the city of Cleveland was found twice, not once, but twice, to be in violation of people's civil rights. And that's, that's very common in larger cities. Baltimore, Los Angeles, New Orleans, they've all been under federal agreements after have been found to be discriminatory. Secondly, you know, when we met with the sheriff recently, he brought up the murder that happened in Concord. And I went to grade school with the victim's husband. I attended St. Mary's with him for more than a few years. And in the conversations that I've had with him regarding the murder of his wife, he never once spoke about immigration as an issue. It wasn't about immigration for him. And so I would like to remind the sheriff that, you know, when his, assuming everybody in Lake County has the utmost, you know, best attitude towards immigrants. If he checks for an ICE detainer and there is one and he sent, he delivers that person to the ICE retention, there's a family behind that. Several years ago, we met with a husband whose wife had been deported. She was pulled over on the side of the road for not moving over when an emergency vehicle went by. That's why she was stopped. She was here undocumented. She's not illegal, she's not a criminal. It's a civil penalty. And she was stopped for a very simple reason that any one of us could have been stopped for. And she, within three days, she was on a plane and deported to one of the most dangerous border communities in Mexico. And we met with her husband. We attended a meeting with Representative Joyce to discuss his situation. And it was heart-wrenching. His three small children were there in tears. There's so many of these stories that people in Mentor, Willoughby, Wickliffe, wherever, they don't hear. That's not their concern. It should be our concern as a community, as Christians and as commissioners. I hope that's your concern. So that if and when, you know, the situation becomes untenable with ICE officers in masks, you know, manhandling our neighbors, how are we, how are we going to respond? I'm not saying that's likely to happen. But if it does, will we be prepared? Thank you.
I'd like to say that this is why this forum exists. This is why we chose this forum. So we can talk about things that aren't necessarily on our business schedule. So it's an open forum. You can see how much time we spent on it already. And I can tell you that a lot of the mayors, a lot of the people on Wickliff, Mentor, Willoughby, listen to this. So I think that's why it's so important.
Bishop, Mayor.
Girard Mabel, 1049 Wentworth Drive, Pensil, Ohio. That's what I like in the United States. The community come together and the community speaks. And you listen. I'm sitting here, you take time to listen. Very, very peaceful, very patient. And that's what's so great in this country. When I came here, I was, when I came in this country, I was 31 years old. I'm standing before you now, 73 years old. For 42 years, I've been stopped by the police twice. And it was my fault. One time in Mentor and another time also on the other side of Mentor because I see the yellow and I went through. But I have nothing, I have nothing to say really about the police and the sheriff. One time in my church, I had a problem where my musician was playing loud. The chief of police came, he was not chief at that time, but he came. And he shows my musician how to play, you shouldn't have to play so loud to destroy, to make it tough on the, on the community, on your neighbors. What I'm really, what I really like to say today is, a lot of people do not know what really is going on with this traffic, human traffic in this country. No one love the Spanish community more than I because I'm from Haiti and I'm Haitian. I'm an advisor practically since I came, for some reason or another, to president, to governors, to many people. I travel with the Spanish in Washington DC. I travel with them in Columbus. And I spoke for them and I wrote letters for them. And I stood in front of judges for them. Great people. Lake County Sheriff Department is a great department. I study police academy. I went to police academy twice, my wife and I, before my wife went home to glory. And I never thought, I never thought that I would become a chaplain for Lake County Sheriff Department. I thought I would become a chaplain for the Pensil Police Department, but in the start. And I never forgot, one day, the sheriff, Leon Bruno, stopped me, we were in the function, and he said, you know, we are going to put together a program for chaplaincy. And would you be interested? I said, yes, and I was so very pleased and I was so very happy. I went to Columbus in the chaplaincy. And they taught you how to be a chaplain. And now I'm connected with 1,194 Law Enforcement Police Department, in connection with them every single day. So we are serving right now in this area. Eighty-eight, we have 88 counties. And I'm in contact with all of them. And I study, I study, I, I look at, I look at all the sheriff's department. This Lake County Sheriff Department is exceptional. I have the privilege to travel with deputies and travel with them. And I see how they act, I see what they do. They're young and strong and very, treat the people. And I see the people come out and greet them. And they greet the people. We have a great, great, great sheriff. I'm not saying this because I'm a chaplain. I'm saying this because it is the truth. It is completely the truth, the truth. He will, practically, there were time, he will be speaking with me. He will tell me, I'm a bishop. He will tell me things that I need to do. He's a great Christian, he's a great man. He introduced me to a lot of people. And but I'm standing here to say, thank you again for second time commissioners. Thank you again for community coming together. But I want you to know, be very careful because of people sometimes that come and tell you this and that. There is a great situation in this country about human traffic, human trafficking. And if we don't have law enforcement, if we don't have law enforcement, if we don't have the FBI, the CIA, and all of them now calling me. Now let me tell you this, that will be a great situation. But I want you to know, we are in good standard. Because we are following, we have a constitution. There are countries that wish they had a constitution. We have the greatest constitution in the world, which based in the Holy Book, the Bible. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We've covered some controversial topics today, ranging from illegal immigration to the Chinese Communist Party and even human trafficking, as the bishop says. But I think it's time to talk about something even more controversial. Property taxes. And I specifically want to note that while we are all suffering from the largest inflationary increase in property taxes in any of our lifetimes, there is a specially hard burden placed on senior citizens and those on a fixed income. Because you don't necessarily get a COLA equal to the cost of inflation. And frankly, property tax values have gone up even faster than inflation in Ohio. So we've seen for Lake County, a double-digit increase. There was an average increase of 30% across this county. And I know that many people experienced increases larger than that. The state has given the authority to every board of commissioners in the state of Ohio, including this one, to make a small change. It certainly will not solve the problem. And I want to emphasize, we can't undo the damage that has been done. We only have the authority granted to us by the state. But what we've been given in the last budget bill is the ability to double the homestead exemption for those who are income-eligible and to double the owner, the owner-occupied credit for those who own their home. Once again, these are very modest savings. But every penny counts when you're deciding whether you're going to buy your medicine this month or you're going to pay your property taxes. And I recognize, because I've heard from so many of you, that that is the decision a lot of people are making right now. Do I pay my property taxes? Or do I skip my medicine? Can I afford to eat this today? It really is sad. I've heard from so many people who are selling their homes, who are looking at selling their homes, who are literally being taxed out of their homes because of these increases. And I want to start again by saying that the authority granted to us is small. I wish it were larger. I wish I had the ability to wave a wand and put us back to where we were property-tax-wise pre-COVID. I wish I had the authority to stop all future inflationary increases. And I've been saying since 2023, there should be a 100% property tax exemption for seniors. You turn 65, you pay taxes your whole life. It should be done at that point. That's my personal opinion. But I'm not a state rep, I'm not a state senator, and no one in this room is unless I'm missing someone. So all we can do is exercise the authority granted to us by the state, something that Commissioner Beveridge has emphasized several times. The federal and state government more often than not dictate the terms. And we just have this little window that we can alter between. But for my money, you know, what I'm allowed to do, I want to lower property taxes, given the chance. And so I wanted to open this conversation, if I could, on doubling the homestead exemption and the owner-occupied credit in Lake County. Gentlemen?
Sure. Fortunately or unfortunately, the opportunity to double the homestead and the owner occupancy for effective for the 2025 tax year, which would be collected next year, for us to be able to do that has to be voted upon by October 31st. And so first, I think that what I would like to see, if possible, since we have a workshop session today, but we will not have another workshop session until after the commissioners' meeting on October 30th. Is that correct? So, Mr. President, if you don't mind, first I'd like to say, if we could, in the new business section of the agenda for the 23rd, which will be next week, if we could please list on there the topic of piggyback, piggybacking the homestead and the owner occupancy so that if there are other folks in the county that would like to come and express opinion, that way, that allows them to be able to come and express an opinion on this topic. Because as we know, our public comment during our meetings is restricted to agenda items. So first, you know, I'd like to bring that up and hopefully we can make that happen for next week. Second, we've already put out, the commissioner's office has already put out informational meeting, educational meeting for October 27th. This is going to be an open-to-the-public meeting. I don't know that we have a location yet because we're trying to figure out how many folks are coming. But it'll be in the county, hopefully. But that'll be at 1:30 to 3:30 where we will discuss tax revenues and what those numbers look like. Not only what the doubling of the piggyback, you know, the piggyback doubling of these two options, the impact that'll have, as well as different opportunities and ideas that we might have surrounding this topic. I can say that if we doubled the owner occupancy and the homestead exemption and if everybody in the county who's currently grandfathered under the homestead exemption qualified, which is probably not going to happen. But if we did that, you're looking at a total reduction of property taxes of around $14 million. To the individual citizen, as you said, we don't have much that we can work with. But these are the tools that have been given to us to use. The reduction won't be that much. But it will have an impact on the schools. 60%, we collect about 400 million, over $400 million in property taxes in this county. All total, all revenue sources, which will be rolling out on 20, the 27th, about $1 billion come into this county for our local taxing agencies and agencies and governments, including schools, townships, library districts, fire districts. So 40% of that is coming in from property taxes. And, I mean, you can run the math. If we, $14 million off of 400 million is a little over a 3% reduction, right? And so it is the only thing that we have the ability to do because of this budget, right? There are other things that we can have a conversation about potentially. Uh, there are other things that we can have a conversation about potentially. Um, but that has to be decided upon right now. Um, and I wanted to make sure that we had a conversation with everybody before we make these decisions. Uh, while it may only be, you know, fifty, sixty dollars in your tax bill, it may be a multiple-million-dollar hit or a million-dollar hit to some other budget in the community. And, um, while we've been given this opportunity and responsibility, I think it's also our responsibility and obligation to have a conversation with the folks before we do that. As I said, um, forty percent of the total revenues coming into our county are property taxes. And if we stroke the pen and eliminated all property taxes tomorrow, I assure you that the cuts required would not be acceptable to what I think has made Lake County great. With that said, there are bigger-picture conversations that need to go on. Um, one of my frustrations with having to make a decision on this, for this tax year, I get yelled at a lot around here for wanting to move fast, um, and having to follow the procedures of taking this timeline and that timeline and when things go into effect. But unfortunately, we have to make a decision by October thirty-first if we want to make enough pinkback for this year. And our state legislators are still actively currently changing laws. And so it's somewhat difficult for us to gather the information that we need to make this decision while the ground is changing and while the information is changing. With that said, uh, we had the opportunity to visit with some of our state house officials uh, and had some great conversations and expressed some of our concerns about what's going on in the property tax conversation. Um, as well as, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do here, um, in our county, um, we've had a meeting with the superintendents on the potential impacts of this. Because, uh, I will say it now and I will say it a hundred more times, I am a very large fan of our K-12 public education system. And I believe that that's what makes Lake County the special place that we discussed about two hours ago. Um, uh, is why this is a better, is why this county is special. And so I want to make sure that while there are things that can be done, and while there are probably efficiencies out there and smart decisions that people may have to make, and that's going to probably come with some, some sacrifices, some changing of how we think, some letting go of what used to be and how things used to be done. We are at a place, I think, in the property tax conversation that we need to have those difficult conversations and understand that the value proposition of the taxpayers needs to be addressed and it needs to be done so in a much bigger conversation. And John and I have talked about these things and how it relates to the state and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, the takeaway I took from those, uh, conversations at the state was a couple of things. One, the state views the property tax conversation as a local issue. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know yet.
It's wrong.
I don't know yet. Um, I would agree that the state school funding is not a local issue. That is a state issue that needs to be addressed. And I firmly believe if you don't necessarily have a property tax issue, we have a school funding issue. Because I can tell you that here in this county, we spend a whole lot of money on local property taxes for our schools, about a hundred million dollars more than we receive from the state. And so having this conversation and saying that property tax issue is a local issue when it relates to school funding, John, I agree with you. But with that said, I value our schools. And I think Lake County values its education, its K-12 public school education. And so, yes, if you want more and better, unfortunately, in education, sometimes that costs money. And so I'm not ruling out the opportunity to have local input on our schools, which I've said I'm an advocate for. But the state feels that this is a local issue to be solved locally. I, uh, I applaud both of the gentlemen to my right. I think that we are all trying to help in every possible way we can to do what we can to show leadership on this, and we will continue to do that. With that said, um, they also made the statement loud and clear that if communities and counties are not utilizing the tools that they have presented to us in this budget, don't bother asking for capital money. Don't bother coming back down to the state to ask for any help on this capital project or that capital project. Whether I agree with that philosophy or not is for another conversation, which I'm not going to have. But what that tells me is I think that we do need to take some action by October thirty-first. We do not make any decisions here today, uh, but I would like to have this topic brought up. It is not, October thirty-first is nowhere near the end of that conversation. It is an ongoing conversation and part of the reason that I raised my hand to run for office is to be able to sit and have a discussion of what can we do better and how can we provide better value to the taxpayer um, as stewards of their dollars, um, across all the services here in our county, so.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, the tax professor in me just cries out, uh, when we hear from the state that property taxes and the burden that's fallen on our community is just a local issue and deal with it yourself. Uh, I think we need to remember that in nineteen thirty-four, when the state adopted the state sales tax, which is the lion's share of the sales tax we pay, it's five-point-seven-five percent of the seven-point-two-five that we pay in Lake County. They passed it for three reasons. Number one, to fund public education. Number two, for the local government fund, and number three, for relief of poverty, all of which are local concerns. So the state sales tax was supposed to go one-hundred percent back to localities to support our schools, our local governments, and to relieve poverty. As the years have gone by and the decades have waned as well, guess what? They keep more and more of the money in Columbus and they give less and less of it back to the people who are paying it. Then, when we adopted the income tax, it was also to deal with the shortfall in public schools. The lottery for public schools. I could go on. The state keeps passing new taxes and fees and then magically, mysteriously, more and more of the money ends up staying in Columbus. Very fat math. Columbus's budget this year is the biggest all time. It's record-breaking. It's over a hundred billion dollars. Property taxes in all of Ohio bring about twenty billion dollars in annually. So to abolish property taxes in the entire state without, by the way, cutting a single teacher, cutting a single police officer, failing to repave a single road, you'd have to reduce the state budget by twenty percent. Now I recognize that's a heavy lift, and I'm not here to say that some of us might not like what was cut. But for the state to say this is a local issue when the need for property taxes came about because Governor John Kasich and others kept cutting the support that went to local government and local schools from the very taxes that were adopted solely to provide for local government and local schools. It, it's more than ironic to hear it said, and it shows that our state reps and senators think we don't know history. Because we were promised these taxes were being adopted for us, for local government, for local schools, and yet the money just keeps staying in a higher and higher percentage in Columbus. Commissioner Beveridge is absolutely right. We do have to consider the impact of cutting property taxes even a little bit on other local governments and schools. But fortunately, if you look at Lake County schools and governments, their share of property taxes have gone up so much due to the revaluation, that even adopting these piggybacks, doubling the homestead, doubling the owner-occupied credit, only takes back a fraction of that increase. So it doesn't even get us back to where we started from the last revale. Everyone still has a lot more money than they started. Now, nonetheless, nobody likes a cut to their budget, even when I got eight million, but you're taking me down to only plus six. I get that. Uh, but that's a conversation that we need to realistically have, acknowledging that, yes, this would be a small haircut for Lake County government, for public schools, for city and township government, maybe a small haircut. But it doesn't come close to the increase, the non-voted increase in property taxes that we all experienced when our homes got revalued thirty, forty, fifty percent higher from the last revale. And by the way, folks, just understand, our auditors already warned us that the next revaluation is likely to result in a twenty-five percent increase in property values. And by the way, that's not twenty-five percent off your old value. That's twenty-five percent higher on the new, much higher value. So in reality, we may be looking at an even bigger tax increase at the next revaluation than we've already experienced. Which is why, when I say property taxes are the most controversial, controversial issue we're discussing today, I think I'm, I think I'm being quite truthful. I think this really is the issue in Lake County and all of Ohio right now. How do we give relief to our seniors? How do we stop taxing people out of our homes? How do we make homeownership affordable for young people so that folks actually stay in Ohio? How do we do that while still supporting the services that we really care about? We all want roads, police, fire. We want good schools and libraries. How do we have that? But not place an unfair burden on folks who just can't afford it. That's the work.
I'd like to just point out too that, it's important to say this again. Right now, the owner-occupancy in homestead is reimbursed by the state. The doubling of it is not. It's, it's something that we're going to eat locally. So I, for one, am pretty passionate about letting these taxing authorities know how this is going to affect them. And that's every school system, library, city, township. Everybody in this county will, will be touched by it to some extent. So, um, we all up here, I believe, uh, are in, you know, support the reduction of property tax. I know mine went up thirty-two percent. Um, so I just, you know, that, that's something I think we do different here in Lake County, is make sure we have an open communication with those people. Um, and it started, and it's, this is just, I think, the beginning of things to come. Uh, the state every day is changing, uh, what they're going to do. They're passing something different all the time. Um, and we have to play what, and our job isn't to make the laws. Our job is to unpack what they give us and do the best we can with it. And I think you'll see some creative things coming out of us, I hope. Um, it's a matter of, uh, being united, um, as a county too. We need, we need some buy-in from, um, our other elected officials and other people throughout the county, so. Um, it's your uncharted territory, I think. Uh, it, we've come off of COVID where, uh, the, the federal government was giving out money left and right to, um, you know, there's no money to be had anymore, um, at least by the federal government and the state, what they're saying. And I worry about things that happened with JFS, our, our vulnerable people, um, which is why we're having this conversation. And, uh, what happens to those that can't eat, that have nowhere to sleep, that are on the sidewalk. So we have to look out for them too, so. Um, you know, these are not easy decisions we have to make. But I think they're all, the reason why we sit up here is, you know, uh, we have to unpack that, that package and, you know, make it work for Lake County the best way we can.
Mr. President. John, I don't, I don't want to last word you. Uh, and I appreciate your, your passion, as I have the same here. Uh, the controversiality of the topics that we're discussing today, uh, whether it be the Communist Party or illegal immigration fear in our communities, uh, these are all pretty severe topics um, compared to property taxes. And in my opinion, of how we balance our budgets and how we manage our budgets and stuff like that. With that said, and, and once again, I appreciate that this can, uh, when we talk about controversy or importance, those might be two words, right? But, um, this is the type of, this conversation, the property tax conversation, is what we as commissioners are able to work on. This is, this is the stuff. We cannot control federal policy. We cannot control immigration laws. Um, we can work on, you know, and I've said it before, I ran to be a county commissioner. What are the, people ask me, what does a county commissioner do? Basically, you try and run the budget of the county. And you try and, and figure out what is the best, most effective way to use taxpayer dollars, which is, which is this conversation here that we're embarking upon. And it's a difficult conversation, as we can tell, on how we handle these things and the decisions we make affect other elected officials and other communities and stuff like that. Um, and so, again, to be clear, if we adopt the piggybacks of the homestead and the owner-occupancy, uh, our budgets get cut by over a million dollars. The, the county budgets between, uh, the, uh, property tax levies that we have at the county as well as, as our mileage. So, um, you know, these are difficult conversations that, that we're ten percent of the overall cut that would be put across the county. Um, but I, you know, I, I applaud all of our inputs, different as they may be. But I think we're doing the right thing on engaging our county, top to bottom, left to right. That does not happen in all counties. I, we can attest that, uh, that is not the case in all counties. Um, but once again, I would hope that, um, that is how we handle our business here in Lake County, so.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes.
The only thing I can add is this is why I'm humbled to sit next to Commissioner Beveridge and Commissioner Ragovich. They're two very good men. And while there's no, there are no two people in this room that agree on all the issues that we've discussed today, I think you can see how well-served we are to have Commissioners Ragovich and Beveridge representing us. I don't always agree with them, but I know their hearts are always in the right place. And they're incredibly intelligent, compassionate folks. We have a pretty good, uh, Assistant Prosecutor in Dave Hackman too. But, uh, seriously, for those of you who might be coming here for the first time, I want you to know uh, how lucky you are to be represented by these gentlemen. There's not a day that doesn't go by that they don't wrestle with these issues. And while it's frustrating when you run into things that are outside the realm of your authority, you know, the federal government, the state government make decisions you may or may not agree with. They never just stop there and say, oh, it's not my job. They try to find a way to make things better, so thank you.
I don't know how you top that. Um, well, I think two and a half hours is about enough, unless anybody has anything else. So I am going to call this workshop to a close.